Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Public Housing. At this time, we ask that you silence cell phones and electronic devices. If you have testimony you wish to submit for the record, you may do so via email at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, and that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. We thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
This meeting is coming to order. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the hearing of the Committee on Public Housing. I am Councilmember Alexa Aviles, and I chair the Committee on Public Housing. I'd like to thank you all for attending this oversight hearing to examine the causes of vacancies in the New York City Housing Authority properties. This hearing was prompted by the noticeable increase in vacant apartments across NYCHA properties during 2022. My coffee is here, right next to me. From publicly available data on the NYCHA website, at the beginning of 2022, NYCHA had just under 500 apartments labeled as vacant. By December 2022, that number had increased to 3,300 units. At the same time, unsurprisingly, there was also an uptick in how many days it takes NYCHA to turn over an apartment or to get a vacant apartment ready for a new tenant, going from an average of 120 days to 260 days. These numbers have real impacts on current NYCHA tenants waiting for transfers or living in buildings with vacant apartments, as well as the more than 250,000 New Yorkers on the NYCHA waiting list. When any entity cares to do an assessment of the wants and needs of New Yorkers and the housing conditions they need and look for, despite all the challenges and ever consistent news coverage of the issues affecting NYCHA residents across New York City, more than one, more than a quarter of a million people are still waiting to secure low-income housing, social housing. This is the type of housing that our city desperately needs, not more luxury market-rate units at $3,000 or $4,000 a month rent. It is this kind of housing that will keep working-class New Yorkers rooted in the city that they built and the city that they love. An analysis done by the council found that this growth was not isolated to a single or set of developments or in any particular borough, but what, but was throughout NYCHA's portfolio. To show the widespread nature of the growth, in December 2021, there were 151 developments with no vacant units. But in December 2022, there were only 36 developments with no vacancies. While these vacant apartments have real impacts on those tenants waiting to move in, it will also have an effect on NYCHA's budget. These vacant apartments means less rent collection and could possibly have an effect on other funding sources. This in turn would make it harder for NYCHA to turn around and re-rent future vacant apartments, which in turn further exacerbates NYCHA's budget issues. Today, I am interested to learn more from NYCHA about the current number of vacancies and what caused them. I want to learn about what NYCHA is doing to turn around and re-rent as many of these vacancies as quickly and efficiently as possible. I also want to know how NYCHA tracks and manages vacant apartments and other unoccupied units in their developments. We'd like to learn what the communication protocols are in relation to vacancies and how tenants and prospective tenants are actually communicated with. And finally, I'd like to know how rat and pack conversions and the impending NYCHA trust process affects and will affect vacant apartments now and in the future. I would like to thank my staff, Christina Botego, Edward Serna, James Niemeister, along with the Public Housing Committee staff, Connor Mealy, Jose Conde, Ricky Chaula, Dan Croup, Rose Martinez, Julia Fredenberg, James Wu, and Rachel Avram for all the work that they've put into the hearing. It is true that teamwork makes the dream work. So I am honored to work with you all, and I also want to thank the residents who are fighting for their homes for a just and rational process and have also graciously shared their direct experience and expertise on this matter. In keeping with the tradition of this committee, before we hear from NYCHA, we will first hear from a panel of residents, and I will turn it over to Committee Council to call up the witnesses. And before we do that, we'd like to acknowledge we are being joined by Councilmember Barron. Thank you for being here, Councilmember.
We'll call Ms. Alexa Torres and Ms. Jeanette Tavares. Please come up to the table up front. Ms. Tavares, if you'd like to start with any statement, and then the Chair will follow up with any questions.
I would like to tell my story. About how the waiting, the NYCHA waiting affected me. My name is Jeanette Vila Tavares. I have three children. The oldest one has 15 years old and he's bipolar with different mental disorders. The oldest one is 15 years old. He's bipolar and has different mental disorders. My second daughter has 10 years old. She has asthma and dyslexia. My third daughter has autism. And with all the difficulties I had with NYCHA, I was in two shelters. It was very difficult with my children. My youngest daughter was admitted in the hospital in Westchester named... FOWI. FOWI Hospital in Westchester. I had to work, but it was very difficult because there's no one to come into the shelter and take care of your children. So practically, you're in the street crying because you can't find anyone to help you. I was only waiting for NYCHA. They called and called, and all they told me was, "Continue calling." Until one day, I went to Councilmember Alexa Aviles. And I went in and I told my story. The person who took care of me really cared for me, and they said that they would help me. I gave them the documents that stated that I had already an apartment assigned to me. But even so, they took a long time. The Councilor and his team sent me emails. Why didn't they give me the apartment? They said, "Oh, it's plastic, or it's missing." There was always a reason for them to say why they were handing me the apartment. Either it was lead, or they had to clean it. There was always a reason. And last time, the Councilor had to contact them directly because there was no other excuse for why they weren't giving it to me. The Councilmember had to get in contact with them. And if it weren't for her and her staff, her people, I would still be on the streets. It's lamentable that more people are experiencing the same situation as me. And all of that led me to the fact that I'm depressed now. I have to take medication and continue taking therapy and try to overcome what happened. But it's been marked for me, and you and your children. And then the result is that I'm suffering from depression. I have to take medications. I'm doing therapy, but the problem is this leaves you marked for a long time, and your children as well. And thank you all for the work that the Councilor does. Thank you for everything, and to you, Councilmember, for the work you do.
Muchisima gracias por su testimonio. Thank you for your, for your testimony. And I'm gonna speak in English, and I'll allow you to translate just for, for the other listeners as well. Thank you, thank you for sharing your story and for your patience and your courage. I'm, I'm sorry that you had the experience that you had. And we are working very hard to, thankfully, you are in an apartment now. Can you clearly, for the record, tell us how long did you wait until you were placed in the apartment?
Yes, after the apartment was assigned, it was in March 1st of 2021. And it was delivered in September of 2022. And they gave it to me in September of 2022. But at that time, the Councilor was working with me. Otherwise, I wouldn't have had the apartment. They just said I was waiting. On one occasion, the Councilor called to confirm that I had the apartment. And they replied that I didn't have the apartment. So the, the Councilmember was working with me while I was waiting. And in one certain, one instance, the shelter called. And they, and they said that, "No, the apartment had not been assigned yet." That, "No."
Who called you from the NYCHA?
Yes, the Councilor called NYCHA to confirm. Because I kept saying I already had an apartment assigned. And they called to confirm, and they said that it wasn't true that I had an apartment in that building. It was frustrating because I was waiting for that apartment. And I had to call the Councilor and his team. And they called NYCHA to see why they had done that. And they didn't explain. But they gave no explanation.
Did NYCHA ever send you a letter or did they proactively call you around updates on the apartment?
Did NYCHA send you an update? No.
How many times do you think, over that period of time, you called NYCHA to get updates?
How many times do you think, over that period of time, you called NYCHA to get updates? How many times do you think, over that period of time, you called NYCHA to get updates? I called every week, every week.
Did you ever get an explanation about why or why something changed?
No, I was just waiting, and if in some time, they didn't give me the apartment, I had to go back and certify. No, that's just to wait, and if I didn't get the apartment, then I would have to recertify.
Okay. Muchisima gracias por su testimonio. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Ms. Torres, if you'd like to give your testimony.
Good morning, Councilwoman Aviles and the other Councilmembers. Thank you for giving residents in public housing the opportunity to speak on issues that affect us on a daily basis. This issue of having empty apartments not only affects residents who are waiting list to get an apartment, but also on residents who are waiting to be upgraded. I do have a resident who's been waiting for over a year who needs to be upgraded to an apartment. And the excuse has to be, no, the lead abatement. I'm now being told by Friday that it's, they're going to give her the keys, but she's been waiting over a year and a half. And this is a family of five, a working family, who really needs to be in an apartment so that the children and the parents are comfortable and their quality of life is not put to a stress, especially during these times of pandemics when you have, supposed to have separation, and young children are getting sick, and they are the most contagious. I can tell you, as a former worker, employee of the Department of Education, I never got that sick until I worked in a school building. Children carry everything, and, you know, and they call this childhood diseases, right? And rightfully so. When an adult gets it, it can literally kill you. And so, the other concern we have with all these empty apartments and the rules that need to be applied is that anybody that's coming in from a shelter needs to be screened, just like I was screened or anybody else. Because to date, if there is a grievance process when people have died, and I've had a lot of that in Smith, right? The next person who is going to be the head of household has to be screened. We have families that have a lot of issues, and they need service. We cannot continue to take on everybody without having the support services in our developments to help those families. Sunday, I spent a good 30 minutes looking out the window. I had four police, an ambulance, three phone calls from the building across from me because someone was having a spiral, right? And this is very common in Smith houses, and I'll talk about Smith, but also, we have mental health issues across our district. And I'll speak for Manhattan South as the Chair of Manhattan South District Council Presidents. I've had TA presidents that have actually been physically assaulted, right? And so, yes, we have empty apartments, but maybe some of those apartments should be used by social services in our, in our buildings to help these families. We're not asking people to be evicted. I know what it's like to be homeless, right? And so, no, we need support, we need help. And it really, I don't think that seven social workers in all of NYCHA can really service the amount of families that we have. And I would say that not having these apartments with residents in it doesn't help the situation either because of the homeless situation. Sometimes they'll break into the apartments, take over the apartments, right? And people think that people are living there, but they're really not. And we've had those kinds of situations across the board. So, I thank you for this time. And the last piece of this is that, believe it or not, for resident associations, councils to function, these apartments not being rented do affect the budget of the resident council, right? I know for a fact that Smith Houses has 54 empty apartments, and they're different sizes. But I also have families that have been waiting in Smith to be upgraded, downgraded, and that has not happened. And some families have asked, you know, they have four, six rooms. They've asked to move to one room, and they, that has not happened. So I think that in the process, you know, there has to be a conversation with management and with the resident association of how do we work this out so that everyone gets to live in a decent apartment, notwithstanding the repairs that need to be done, right? In our buildings, but that people have a safe, a placed shelter where they can live. And I thank you for your time and for the respect that you have shown the residents in public housing.
Thank you so much, Ms. Torres. I have a couple of follow-up questions, if you would indulge us. In, in, under your long tenure as a TA president in, in public housing, can you describe how the information of vacancies is conveyed to you? The frequency, what is the information that is conveyed?
It's not really conveyed. I just happen to know because when my TPA funds, I got the number. I said, "This is wrong," and then I was informed. This is not a conversation that management has. We have requested of NYCHA as a C-COP, right now I speak as a member of C-COP, to have every manager read the 964, and if necessary, have training, right? Because one of the things that 964, to my surprise, said that we, the resident councils, have to be included from conception. I would say that sometimes that's a pick and choose on managers. No reflection on minds personally. I'm just saying, I did have a relationship with my previous, may she rest in peace, manager, where we truly had a team and a respect. We always didn't agree, right? But there was a respect. And she understood the 964 because I truly printed it for her and put it on her desk. And I think that made a difference in how we proceeded after that, right? But that doesn't happen.
In terms of the communication that you've seen NYCHA provide to tenants who are waiting to be right-sized up or down, or even tenants who are waiting for their units, can you describe the type of communication that you've seen in your, under your long tenure?
They have to constantly call. The response, getting through is very hard. Depending on the development, some of the, some of the, some of the managers, some of the assistant managers are polite and professional. Others are just rude, right? There's a, there's a lapse of understanding that we have a right to ask. And putting aside confidentiality, right? Giving me numbers does not break anybody's confidentiality. I, as an advocate for residents, when I go in with a resident, I will make sure that the story is told. And at a given point, I might step out. I might stay, depending on how the resident feels, to give them that kind of privacy. Because I think everybody, everybody's story's different. And some people literally, they get embarrassed. They don't want to. Even though I tell my residents all the time, "We all have crystal walls. Nobody has concrete walls." You know, when you have a family, listen. You know, unless you're Jesus Christ, I, I don't know anybody that's perfect, right? And so, people have to know what they, what they want to share, not share.
Ms. Torres, you mentioned you notice, because you monitor the TPU funds that you depend on for, for the activities, and you notice the movement up and down. When you inquire about why maybe your funding has decreased, do you receive an adequate explanation about what's happening?
No, I was told that I have 54 apartments that are not in service because they need to be lead or mold.
That's it.
That's it. And that based on, they're only allowed to give us the funds based on the fact that of only the ones that are rented. And I said, "Okay, I understand that." But I, what I did not know, that it was 54. That was not my impression.
So from the communication, essentially, 100% of the apartments, from what you were told at Smith, are out of line because of lead and mold. Is that, is that ever provided in writing to you?
No, no. As I said, the young lady that I have, she's been waiting for over a year and a half, right? She has a family through, she's a lovely, she's a lovely young lady. It's a nice family. And she's been waiting. And, and, I mean, she's come to the TA room like crying, like, because she's been waiting for this apartment. And she was shown the apartment that she was supposed to go into, number one. Number two, they, it needed to be repaired. And I need to, I'm not quite sure, but I'm almost sure she even put a deposit on it. I'm not sure. I have to clarify that. I'm just looking at my notes. But the reality of it is, the apartment that she was shown, she said, "Well, do you have a second one?" And then she was told, "No, you have to take this one. Don't take any." Because it's a high floor, and she has three small children. And she wanted a low, a lower one. There is one vacant on her floor right now that would suit her, which would mean that NYCHA would probably save $300 to help her move or whatever. But it would save money and time because she would just move from one apartment to the other. Historically, we used to do that, where people downsized, upsized on the same floor with their neighbors. So you kept your same neighbors, and you were alive. The excuse that's used is T, is the T-PAC, right? But the reality of it is that when NYCHA wants to bring somebody in on an emergency or anything else, that, you know, that flies out the window, the, you know, the computer system, which I have reservations about, right? So, it's important that these apartments, first, the residents who live already there are placed properly within the apartment that they're supposed to when they ask for the transfers. And then, when they bring in residents who might have issues, that they come in with a support and not just thrown into a community that then everybody has to deal with the issues and the problems that they bring with them.
In your last question, and thank you. In your estimation, when you've seen vacant apartments, I assume, you know, you're checking in with apartments. I've seen a few that residents have said, "Oh, it's been locked with all the stuff inside of it for years, including infestation of rats and other fun pests." Have you seen that in your development? Apartments that have just been sitting vacant for years?
We have apartments that have been vacant for years. But I will say this much for the staff in, in, in Smith. When, when there's a vacancy, they really go in and they clean the apartments. The issue becomes, if that apartment is empty too long, of, especially with the homeless situation and anything like that, people breaking the lock, the housing lock, going in and nobody knows. And sometimes people just think that that apartment's rented and that somebody's moved in, and so who's living there, right? And that becomes the issue. But in Smith, I can say, in terms of the maintenance staff, we don't have any apartments that we have that are over, overfilled is because the resident who lives there, you know, courts. And, and that's an issue. And sometimes, if you call management, they'll try to call in social service. But as I said, right now, as far as I know, what I was told was that NYCHA only has seven certified social workers for all of NYCHA. How, in God's name, are seven people supposed to handle a half a million people? I, I mean, I was literally shocked, you know? It, it was like, you have, I guess, a supervisor and then one for each borough. That's...
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Torres. Thank you for the work you do. And, oh, I'd like to, before you jump into your questions, don't leave yet, I'd like to, like to acknowledge the colleagues who have joined us. Councilmember Sanchez, Councilmember De La Rosa, Councilmember Chiozzi. Councilmember De La Rosa, Councilmember Chiose, and Councilmember Lincoln Reser. And Councilmember Juan is also on Zoom. Thank you, and Councilmember Baron.
Yeah, thank you for your testimony. I wanted to know, because I'm sure we'll be questioning NICA when they come up here, but you said 54 in Smith, in my district, about seven to eight developments. In 2021, we had like eight vacancies, and by 2022, it went up to 138 vacancies. And I wanted to know the increase in the Smith houses, and you said the family was out for a year and a half. What reason did NICA give you for that year and a half wait? Did they give you a reason, and was there any discussion on why the increase in vacancies?
Okay, so I'll answer the second part first, because the other one is really emotional for me. The year and a half has been unlead abatement. They haven't done a lead abatement. The apartment needed to. Smith Houses is as old as I am, I'm 70 years old. So you know that when those apartments were made, that development was built, there were no rules, there were no codes. So I know for a fact that on the floors, we have asbestos, definitely lead. And so the apartment has to be put up to date and all of that. But it's taken a year and a half to get to trades to come in first, to do the lead abatement, then whatever else they find that needs to be fixed, so it's, and they still, to, to date, right now, because I text the young woman, they have yet to get their apartment, or the keys for the apartment. The growth in vacant apartments is, at least in Smith, is because of COVID. We, I had double funerals in Smith on COVID. And because I have an alarming, alarming rate of 9/11 cancer. And I blame the contractors that didn't do their job of cleaning Smith when it should have been done. It's alarming that in one week, I had, five years ago, five wom, four women come up to me. Since then, it's now grown to seven women that I know who have 9/11 cancer, right? One of my board members died of 9/11 cancer. She lasted 30 days from the time that she was diagnosed. And for five years, I have been saying, so my anger is real, the dirt and the debris of 9/11 has been disturbed by things, by the roofs that were fixed, by the dirt that was never changed, and it is killing us. And it's gone in one ear, gone out the other. Eight years ago, I had open-heart surgery. My doctors feel that part of it is probably 9/11 because my heart, at the age of 62, was like, as, my mother was 89 years old when she died, and my heart condition was the same as my mother, which was 20 years more, right? And so those are the effects. We were told it was safe, but Smith, being the only development in ground zero, has experienced. So I know that some of those 54 apartments are apartments that residents who have died from COVID or from 9/11 cancer, that, I mean, it's alarming, right? But it is a reality, and when you look at those numbers, you say, oh, my God. But it is that, I know that. And so, and I can tell you, because we had a week, my board, where we actually had to decide what funerals we were going to. And we debated, right? And so, yeah, that, that's part of it.
Condolences, and you are to be appreciated, highly appreciated, for your commitment in spite of the emotional trauma that you have to be going through. And I'm sure there's a story like that in just about every development in the city. I grew up on the Lower East Side, I grew up in the Lilian Waldhouses.
I have family that lives there still.
Right, it's not far from Smith, we used to go up to Smith to play ball and, and all of that. So I'm very familiar with the Smith houses, and, and you just continue your commitment, and I'm sure we're going to get as much support as possible from the city council. But I want to thank you for your testimony, and thank you for your commitment to the residents of NICA.
Thank you. Councilmember Resler.
Thank you so much, Chair Avila. I really just want to echo the sentiments of Councilmember Baron. Ms. Torres, you've been an exceptional tenant association president at Smith Houses. I see you everywhere, you are always fighting for your community, and it's hard work. And I feel the very real pain that you are communicating to us today. I think about the many tenants that I've lost in my NICA developments during this pandemic, the funerals that I've attended, it's been a lot. And we are very fortunate as a city. The night, residents of public housing are fortunate to have you as such an engaged and capable and dynamic champion for public housing and improving the conditions in public housing. So I really want to thank you for being with us today. But more importantly, thank you for the work you do, day in and day out, year in and year out, on behalf of Smith. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Torres.
Thank you very much for your time and your respect.
So at this point, we'd like to call the representatives of NICA. We will have the chance for more testimony after the administration goes. Just one second, yes. Sorry, Ms. Glover? Yes, you can come up. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for letting me speak. I wasn't originally going to testify, but I'll be quick. When I heard that this was an examination, a hearing to examine the vacancies in NICA, at Washington Houses Tenant Association meeting on last week, I put it in a chat that this hearing was going to be taking place. Because I want the tenants to know what's going on. Not only am I a former TA president, but my mother was a TA president in the 70s. So I got to see how it works. Back then, management did their job. You throw something out the window, whatever you did, there was a penalty. So the tenants didn't have to have a TA back then, management took care of everything. Then crack came, so that just blew everything out the window. Our laundry rooms went, you name it, it all went. And these people were able to sell crack in these developments, long lines. I used to hear about long lines in these developments. But anyway, getting back to the situation at hand. I think you need to have some housecleaning here at these city hall meetings. Let me tell you what I mean. When I watch you on the channel 74, a lot of times, you can't hear the testimonies. A lot of times, you can't hear when the council is speaking, it's extremely low. I put it all the way up to 100. Now, maybe my TV is just cheap, I don't know. But it goes up to 100, and it's like you can't even hear it. This is 2013, this is not the Stone Age. So I think y'all need to tweak it, whatever y'all need to do in city hall, do it, because there's people who can't get to these meetings physically, okay? So that's your housekeeping homework. When you had the workshop, when you had the hearing for resident engagement, I was here. I didn't have my paper with me, I emailed it to you, I never got a response from you. And that was major stuff, okay? Because resident engagement has moved over to participating residents and civic engagement and all this kind of thing here. They're just shuffling along and singing a song. And so I try to come to these meetings so I can know what time it is, what's going on. And I tell the tenants, I share with them, I'm constantly sharing with them. But I'm learning a lot by being a sharer, they don't like that. So there's been some foul crap going on, and it's going to be dealt with, I can guarantee you that. One of the last things I'd like to say, most people, like Amelika Samuels and different ones, when they hosted their hearings, they used to have their opening statement on paper. So I would appreciate it if you can put it on paper, maybe before, because I can hang around to get a copy of that. I'd like to hear, that was an awesome statement you gave, and it needs to be on paper so that those of us that came can have a copy of it, okay? And as far as vacancies goes, I'm not the TA, but I can guarantee you, sister, you look in this room and see how many people are here that are actually presidents, by board members and stuff. It's empty, that one person, Amelika from Alfredi Samuels, that just testified. That's one person out of how many tenant associations? This is what's going on, they're not sharing information. That C-COP that she's talking about, it needs to be eliminated. It needs to be eliminated because it's not effective, it's a waste of money. And if I can get here, granted, you got tenants that work, we got that. You got tenants getting SSI, tenants getting welfare, I don't care what you getting. You're a human being, you're a United States citizen, okay? I can sit here all day and tell you the illegitimacy of what's going on in NICA, okay? Because we want to sit here and blame these people, but guess what? The authority, I was told, that the city councils, they can, they can question the authority. They can have hearings to the authority, but they can't go kick their doors in and tell them, you got to get out, we're going to drag you to prison because you're not doing your job. Y'all don't have the capacity to do that, and that's what we need.
Yeah.
That's what we need. We need some people that's going to kick these doors down.
Ms. Glover, first, thank you. Of course, my apologies around the last hearing, I heard you, we dropped the ball there, we will do better. In terms of, thank you for the suggestions around hearing testimony volume, that's important. The opening statements, getting those on paper for the residents, very important. And the communication improvement, absolutely, we all have to do better. And this, the hearings are about accountability, and certainly, we know there are jurisdictional challenges. NICA is a state authority that receives a good portion of federal money. We have very limited oversight powers over the agency. But obviously, our role here is to get as much information as possible, both so that we can improve the conditions of what we know is happening on the ground. It's, it's not to beat the agency who is working on a daily basis. There are, in many ways, some improvements, in other ways, there are things that really need to get done, and we need to do a much better job in. So I really appreciate your observations. We have to do better to get tenant association presidents and residents here. There's a structural issue, we're having this hearing at 10:00 AM when people are working.
I can guarantee you, there's a lot of tenants that don't work.
We as a city council, this is a structural problem for people that are working in general. We have hearings during the day.
As I said, I don't care if they own welfare, SSI, SSD, I wouldn't care what kind of income they have. The information has to get to the tenants. Can I say one more thing? Your opening statement, can I have a copy of it before I leave?
Happy to do that. My team, my team will follow up with you, but thank you, and I guess with that, we will move to the agency.
No questions from anybody?
So the, the person that can hold NICA accountable, and really fire some people or put some new people in place, is a man named Mayor Eric Adams. We should look into calling that office and applying some pressure on the administration.
First of all, I know that you probably work very hard, but the fact that you're chewing while talking to me shows me what this council is about. And on that note, I'll be waiting for the copy of your opening statement, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and now we'll move to the, to the NICA team.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee, and to respond honestly to council member questions?
Yes.
Yes. Good morning, Chair Alexa Avilas, members of the Committee on Public Housing, other distinguished members of the city council, NICA residents, community advocates, and members of the public. I am Eva Trimble, NICA's Chief Operating Officer. I'm pleased to be joined today by Sylvia Audi, Senior Vice President of Public Housing Tenancy Administration and other members of NICA's team. Thank you for this opportunity to discuss the status of vacancies in NICA developments. NICA is a critical affordable housing resource, and our goal is to get New Yorkers into available homes as quickly as possible without compromising the safety or quality of the home. My colleagues and I are using every resource available to improve the quality of life for NICA residents. In this vital mission and in compliance with our 2019 HUD agreement, we have been focusing intensely on addressing the areas that are highest concern for our residents, including lead-based paint, mold, heat and elevator service, and pest and waste management. As part of this crucial work over the past few years, we have been performing extensive and required environmental work in every apartment once they become unoccupied. Considering that residents stay in their NICA apartments for an average of 25 years, this is a key opportunity to complete critical health and safety work in these apartments. The amount of work we must do to get these apartments ready for the next family is represented by the immense capital repair needs of our buildings, $40 billion across the portfolio, an astonishing figure that continues to grow by about $1 billion a year. I'd like to give you a few examples of the essential work we are performing. Since December 2021, we have been working diligently to ensure that all apartments are made lead-free under the city's new stringent lead-based paint standard of .5 milligrams per square centimeter. Since 2004, Local Law 1 has required landlords to perform lead-based abatement of certain components upon apartment turnover. NICA's policy is to abate all components to make an apartment lead-free for the new resident. In 2019, the city council enacted new legislation that reduced the lead paint standard in New York City from 1.0 milligrams per square centimeter to .5 milligrams per square centimeter. This new lead standard took effect December 2021, and NICA immediately began testing and fully abating vacant apartments to meet the new standard. When an apartment turns over, our Healthy Homes team conducts a lead inspection using this new standard. If lead paint is identified, the apartment is scheduled for abatement. From December 2021 through January 19, 2023, Healthy Homes has cleared nearly 4,500 apartments at the new stringent standard, with about a quarter of those requiring abatement. On average, it takes four to six months to complete lead work during turnover. Once a work order is created for lead testing, Healthy Homes schedules the inspection with a certified vendor, conducts quality assurance review of the lead inspection report, and provides the results, also known as a lead disclosure, to the development. This process takes about four months to complete. If the apartment is negative, this is the end of the process. If the apartment tests positive, it takes an average and additional two and a half months to have a lead-certified contractor fully abate the apartment. In 2023, Healthy Homes is taking steps to shorten this timeline, including adding more resources to review testing reports, adding new abatement vendors, and most importantly, proactively, proactively testing tens of thousands of apartments at the .5 milligrams per square centimeter standard, so they don't need to be tested again at apartment turnover. Since December 2021, NICA has proactively tested approximately 30,000 apartments at the standard and expects to test an additional 40,000 before June 2023, sorry, 2024. While the practice of eliminating lead paint adds additional time to the apartment turnover process, it also means that every resident will move into a new apartment that is free of this environmental hazard. of this environmental hazard. Our work in this area is transformative, an accomplishment that addresses long entrenched issues and dramatically benefits residents. We are also required to ensure that vinyl asbestos floor tiles are properly abated during the turnover process. Asbestos work is performed whenever there are broken or damaged asbestos floor tiles in an apartment. We abate around 30 vacant apartments each week to meet these requirements. Since December 2021, we have abated asbestos floor tiles in more than 2,000 unoccupied apartments. On average, it takes 55 days to perform the asbestos investigation and 29 additional days to conduct the asbestos abatement if the apartment tests positive. Notably, Healthy Homes coordinates the lead and asbestos work as much as possible to ensure those times occur at the same time. It costs approximately between $28,000 and $63,000 to complete lead and asbestos testing and remediation work if necessary in an apartment. In 2002, it took an average of 236 days to get an apartment ready, including the time to complete any required lead paint work and asbestos work. Considering that our average residency is 25 years, many apartments also require extensive general repairs from years of wear and tear, for example, painting and cabinets. This also factors into the turnaround time, and along with staff and funding constraints, it means we are not turning over apartments as quickly as we would like. However, I am proud to be able to say that anyone moving into a NYCHA apartment will be safe from lead and asbestos. As noted, this extensive cleaning process, along with the general repairs performed, contributes to slower turnaround times and longer waits for many families. NYCHA is a critical affordable housing resource for New York City, and we understand the implications of this delay. The previous practice was to match prospective tenants with apartments as soon as the apartment was vacated. This left many families waiting far too long, often many months, before they could move into an apartment. Therefore, last spring, we instituted a policy change to no longer match prospective tenants to apartments until homes were turnkey-ready. This reduces the amount of time between when residents are matched to apartments and when they can move in. As of January 16, 2023, there are 5,964 unoccupied apartments out of 161,585 apartments available for occupancy. This is a 3.7 vacancy rate. This includes 1,662 apartments that are matched to households. To place this in context, the city's overall vacancy rate is 4.5% and 3% for rent-regulated housing. And NYCHA's vacancy rate is lower than the National Public Housing vacancy rate of 5.4%. Please note that another approximately 1,000 apartments are permanently off the rent roll and not considered rentable. For example, they are used for NYCHA property management and maintenance offices or partner facilities such as resident association spaces. To be clear, these apartments that are off the rent roll are not counted as vacant. NYCHA works with partners in all levels of government to use every available resource to get New Yorkers into our deeply affordable apartments. We are grateful for the city's ongoing support, including funding for the vacant unit readiness program. In the current fiscal year, the city has made $78 million available to NYCHA for this program for rehabilitation work associated with expediting apartment turnover. Additional funding is also available in the following fiscal years. While we understand that it may be frustrating for prospective tenants to wait for a new apartment, the work we are doing is essential to providing a decent home for the quality of life of their families, as well as for generations to come. We are always eager to collaborate with the council and other partners on how we can improve service to residents and continue our progress as an organization. Thank you, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. I'd like to acknowledge Councilmember Ayala has joined us. Thank you for being here, Councilmember. I'm gonna start with a couple of questions that'll review a little bit of stuff that's in your testimony for the record to make sure that we are clear, and then I'll hand it over to council colleagues who I know have to go, and we can resume our general questions. But to start with, it would be helpful to understand the definitions NYCHA uses for unoccupied apartments. On the NYCHA metrics website, there are three categories for unoccupied units: vacant, non-dwelling, move-in/selected. Can you define each of these categories and describe who makes the assessment to determine when an apartment changes from one category to the other?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember, and I do apologize that I've been using different terminology here in my testimony today than what is on our website. So let me explain how they, how they relate to each other. On our website, we use the term non-dwelling units, and that is what I am referring to as off-the-rent roll. We have two categories of off-the-rent-roll units: temporarily off-the-rent roll and permanently off-the-rent roll. As I mentioned in my testimony, we have about 1,000 units that are permanently off-the-rent roll for non-residential uses such as resident association space or NYCHA office space, and those we don't count as vacant units any longer. We have about 1,992, to be exact, units temporarily off-the-rent roll, and they're temporarily off-the-rent roll due to major repair needs, more, more than what a typical repair would entail, more like a capital improvement, as well as units that we're using as hospitality units to facilitate temporary relocations.
Could you repeat that number one more time?
992.
992 that are temporarily off-the-rent rolls? And these are hospitality units?
Hospitality, units that require major rehab, other units that are, are held for major repairs. So the, it's a variety of reasons that we put it all temporarily off-the-rent roll as they await, await a change in status.
Could you provide the council with a breakdown of all these subcategories in both the temporary and the breakdown of the, and also in the permanent? How many are for TA? What are the various uses and how many units are for each use?
Happy to follow up with you, with that information for you. So that leaves us with about 3,310 units that are vacant units, and you, the vacant units are units available for occupancy. In addition, I use the term matched in my testimony, and in the metrics page, we have, we use the term move-in or selected. Those are comparable, and so as I mentioned previously, we had matched prospective tenants with apartments as soon as that apartment became vacant, and now we're waiting until the apartment is turnkey-ready to make those matches. And so right now, we have 1,662 prospective tenants that are matched to apartments, and that, that is very near the move-in selected data on our metrics page. Also, please note that our metrics page is only updated once a month, so the numbers you're seeing there are from December, and the numbers I'm using in my testimony today are from January 16, 2023.
Is there a reason why it's only updated once a month?
I can confirm that and check, but we expect the updates to be available the first week in February.
I'd encourage frequent updating, if not, what's the point of the website? In terms of the, in terms of matched, can you further explain what matched means, and if there are various categories within which people fall into matched?
For that question, I will hand it off to my colleague, Senior Vice President Sylvia Audi.
Good morning, everyone. So when an applicant is selected for an apartment, we consider that matched. There aren't subcategories, but people can be in different stages of that matched process. So they could be at the point where they've received an apartment selection letter, and they have been made aware that an apartment is available, or they could be at the point where they've scheduled an apartment viewing and are having a rental interview with the property management staff at the development where they were selected, or they could be awaiting, based on the previous policy, the apartment to be move-in-ready.
When, when does NYCHA receive a deposit? What, what stage is a person in when they provide a deposit to NYCHA?
Sure. Usually, that occurs at the apartment viewing and rental interview if they accept the apartment. Property management and the tenant or the prospective tenant will agree to a timeframe to provide the security deposit and other rental fees.
And what's the general timeframe between each of these phases as that tracked?
I will have to get back to you on the exact details of those timeframes, but the apartment selection letter and the apartment viewing is coordinated between property management and the prospective tenant, and usually, that is coordinated with their schedules. It's usually two to four weeks between the apartment viewing and the security deposit or rental, and rental fees being submitted.
And when a prospective tenant provides a deposit at that stage, what's generally the timeframe between actually moving in or receiving the keys?
So given that we just changed this policy in March, where we hope to have that, that timeframe drastically shortened because the apartment will be turnkey-ready at the time of viewing, but right now, for 2022, our turnaround time was 236 days.
So the 236 is from the viewing to move in?
No, that's the total time.
That's the total time.
To turn around the apartment. And so unfortunately, people were matched at the time the apartment became vacant and then had to wait through our repair process until they could move in. And now we are, we are, we've changed that in order to dramatically reduce that wait time.
In, I think we're probably gonna return to this because we've had a good number of instances where people have received keys, or no, they've provided deposits and have waited inordinate, more than a year. And much of our staff time has been calling NYCHA to find out why are there delays with no expla, with no explanation. So I'm gonna move on and just ask a few more, and then I'm gonna turn it over to my colleagues. Thank you for your patience. So we went through the vacant, the, the non-dwelling, and the move-in selected. Are there other internal categories for unoccupied apartments that NYCHA uses, and can you define them and provide any other numbers that may be related to those categories?
We have no other categories other than the temporary and permanent off-rent roll, as, as I mentioned, and then the general vacant unit status, and we'll provide you those details.
Is there a reason why the terminologies are different from what is used internally and what is provided on the website for public consumption?
I'd have to go back and, and double-check on that, but we'll let you know.
As of today, how many units in NYCHA are currently vacant? If, I, I think I know the answer to this, but I'm gonna indulge the question just for the record, we just reviewed this, but if a unit has been reserved for a tenant, they've been matched, who has paid a deposit, is that still part of the vacant unit count?
Yes. And we have 1,662 out of that 5,964 that are matched. I don't know if all of those matches have, have been to the stage of a security deposit, but 662 are matched to an apartment, so they have a letter that says they, they have an apartment.
How many apartments have been vacant for more than a year?
Out of the 5,964, we have, 98% of the units have been, most of them have been vacant less than a year. Sorry, hold on one second. The three, the 3,310 have been vacant for 233 days on average, and the, and 98% of the units have been vacant for less than three years. So the temporary off-rent roll, which we, we have 992 units in that category, have been vacant the longest because they are in an off-rent roll status awaiting major rehabs or being used for hospitality suites, and those are vacant on average 537 days. So the, that's average together.
I'm so sorry, I'm gonna ask you to repeat that, I got lost in the back and forth, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. So the, out of the 5,964, the average time they've been vacant is 350 days. And that average of 350 is, you see the range from 233 days on average for our vacant units and 537 days average for the temporary off-rent roll.
Okay, I think we're gonna probably get back to these numbers because...
Sure, and we can provide the details, you know, after the hearing, we can send you that information offline.
Right. I think I'm a little stumped by the 537 days that are off-rent. Why are they vacant? What is happening there?
Those are the units, the temporary off-rent roll are, we are using them for hospitality suites to facilitate emergency relocations. We're using, they are awaiting major rehab, usually capital improvements. Some of them have been fire damaged and, and therefore require more extensive rehab or awaiting, you know, fire marshal determination that we can proceed. So there's other category, there are other aspects of the temporary off-rent roll that we will share with you.
Right. Okay. I guess with that, I will turn it over to my colleagues. I'll have Councilmember Dalla Rosa.
Thank you, Chair, for this important hearing. I have questions around transfers. We often get calls from constituents about transfers, sometimes they're safety transfers, sometimes they're transfers related to health, the presence of mold, for example, if someone is ill. Can you walk us through the process for transferring and how the vacancies play into that, into those decisions?
Thank you for that question. So apartment selections are governed by NYCHA's Tenant Selection and Assignment Plan. We call it TSAP. It was designed to ensure that NYCHA processes all of our housing applications, so applicants and transfers, in a fair, objective, and non-discriminatory way, in accordance with applicable federal, state, and local laws. Emergency transfers and reasonable accommodations, so the medical-related transfers, are a higher priority than other types of transfers. There's some exceptions, but they are, they fall into the same rotation or in a rotation with applicants. So when an apartment becomes vacant, our Tenant Selection and Assignment Plan will make a match based on the household composition and the designation or preference for that family, based on location and needs, and that's how the match occurs.
What about in instances where there, for example, is a fire? We've had several, unfortunately, one deadly, one in indictment houses. When there is a fire and a family is displaced, what is the transfer process?
So for a fire, it falls outside of that process. So for a fire, we relocate a family to a hospitality unit temporarily until the repairs can be made in their original apartment. In instances where, as Eva mentioned, there are extensive repairs that are needed and there isn't a reasonable timeframe to return that family to that unit, we may make a permanent transfer to where they were relocated or another unit of their preference.
Thank you. You know, it sounds seamless, but I know from experience that it's not a seamless process, so I just wanna put that out into the universe, that we hear complaints from tenants who either are waiting for transfers or have been given the runaround in that process, and so I wanna encourage us in this discussion to think about how we make that more efficient and fluent for, for tenants. I also have a question about right sizing. Can you sort of walk us through the process for right sizing and like, how it is determined that a unit is either, the, the composition of the family has changed to the point where they need to right-size, and how that process works in terms of communicating to families that they're, you know, they have to right-size, more they're in the process of needing to right-size? You know, a lot of our families are non-traditional, right? You have grandparents raising grandchildren, you have children that are in the foster care system, you have so many different realities that these families face, and, and sometimes when folks are asked to right-size or downsize, it can cause chaos, especially when there isn't a lot of information as to where they're supposed to go. Can you walk us through that process? Thank you, Chair. Thank you Chair.
So we'll, I'll start with the household composition piece. So it's very important for the household to report to NITRA any changes in their household composition through an annual recertification or an interim recertification. And that includes like children coming into the household or adults being added, most, most importantly for health and safety reasons, but also for appropriate apartment sizes. So in instances, in the scenario that you explained, a grandparent taking on a grandchild as a guardian, if they, for instance, are in a senior building and they no longer qualify to be in a senior building because there are children or young, you know, younger children, younger adults in the household, those, that would fall into a transfer request for a no longer eligible to be in a senior building and that has a specific priority for a transfer. In instances where the household composition is reported as lower than the number of apartment, or sorry, the bedroom sizes, the bedroom size of the apartment, let's say, we only, they've only reported two adults in a three-bedroom apartment, that's overoccupied. So in that instance, property management will have a conversation with the tenant to say, you are required to right-size. But if there are other household members that NITRA is not aware of, it's difficult for NITRA to say, you know, you don't need to do that unless we are aware of the additional household member. So it is very important and also a requirement for the households to report the proper household composition.
Just one quick follow-up. So I, I've had cases, for example, where a family has two children, they grow, right? They're now 17 and it's a boy and a girl and they don't want them to be in the same room. How is that situation considered when a, a unit becomes vacant in the, in the development, in the complex? Would that family be eligible for a transfer?
They, they have to request it. So it, NITRA will not proactively reach out to the household to request or to propose a transfer to a larger apartment. They can request for a transfer to a larger apartment. It, there are several different priorities for all the different transfer types. That doesn't fall higher than a safety or emergency transfer or a medical transfer.
Thank you Councilmember. I'd like to just ask one quick follow-up question on, on this notion of emergency transfers or priority lists. There's a specific case where we have a one-bedroom apartment, three disabled seniors. Clearly, it's an overcrowded unit. The unit has been without gas for months. Does NITRA consider this situation to be an emergency?
It doesn't fall under our established Tenant Selection and Assignment Plan, but in that situation, without knowing additional details, if escalated, that's something that we would, you know, look to relocate the family temporarily while any issues in the apartment were addressed. If there is a medical need, they would, there would definitely be a reasonable accommodation transfer that could be created for that family to get them right-sized into the proper apartment.
So this, this is an actual case that we've been dealing with for well over a year. The requests for transfers go in, they sit on it. They were offered an apartment in a, in a building that the resident just would not, did not want to entertain because of a whole host of reasons, but still stuck in a waiting pattern. There is medical issues clearly with three disabled adults in an apartment that is overcrowded, where they don't have access to the things that they need and without gas for months and months on end.
And so, Councilmember, I, I'd appreciate it if, after this hearing, we follow up specifically on that case and see what we can, we can do to accommodate that, that household.
We, we will absolutely, we have a long train of communication with NITRA on this particular case. I'd like to pass it over to Councilmember, yes, Councilmember Chiose. I think you're next. I can't remember this envelope.
Thank you Chair Aviles and hello to members of the administration. I guess the first question I want to ask is aside from RAD slash PACT and lead abatement, are there any other reasons in which there are vacancies within these NITRA developments? And what are some of those reasons?
Sure, in addition to lead and asbestos work, the apartments still need significant general repairs. So as I mentioned, many of the apartments have been occupied for 25 years, experienced significant wear and tear that many of our apartments have. And so they still need repairs from many of the skilled trades, painting, plastering, carpentry, sometimes new cabinets. And tho- that work is performed mostly by NITRA staff and that it work competes with work in occupied units. So we do, we understand the need to fill these, these vacancies as fast as possible. And so we are, we are working as, as fast as we can with, with the resources that we have. Overall, we're turning over between 150 and 200 units a month at the pace that we're working right now.
And, and what is the headcount at NITRA for personnel working on reoccupying these units? So doing all of these repairs, including staff or enrolling formerly homeless people into the NITRA system and those tackling the, the NITRA waitlist?
So there's no one unit that's handling that. Most of that work is being done by the individual properties. So we have 138 different property management offices across the five boroughs. And the skilled trades report within their neighborhood or within their development. So that work is performed by all of our operations staff as needed.
Would you think that if there was a unit that particularly focused on filling those vacancies, that there would be a more efficient way of getting folks into those apartments?
What we have started doing to address, to address that concern is we, we have used the vacant readiness program, which is funding provided by the city to hire vendors to help approach this a little bit more efficiently. So we've, most of the work performed under the vacant readiness program has been through vendors that have come in to do that general repair work and that has been able to allow us to keep our skilled trades working on occupied apartment rehabs.
Okay, and I have some district-specific questions as well. So according to the data, there was a jump in vacancies at Marcy Houses where there were less than six vacancies for six months in 2022, to then having a jump in vacancies starting in July 2022, with Marcy now having 24 vacant units. We are also seeing similar trends in Albany, Sumner and Tompkins where the vacancies were in the single digits and then jumped into the double digits in the later or latter half of the year. What is the explanation behind that? And why are units becoming more vacant at the back end of the year?
So in 2022, we did have, we did see an increase in the number of vacant units across all, many of our developments, as the Councilmember mentioned in her opening statement. So it's not specific just to yours, that we will follow up on, on your specific cases. Most of that was due to the fact that starting in December 2020, starting in 2022, following the December 2021 change in the, in the lead requirement, we had to retest and, and start working at the new 0.5 level for lead. And that did, that is the first step in our process. The, that testing also required for us to re, you know, rework with all of our vendors so they were prepared to do that work. We required new XRF machines to do the lead testing. So as we were gearing up, there, it was a slow start in 2022 that then picked up at the end of the year. In addition, we were, we changed our policies. So 2022 was a different year for us for apartment turnovers as we were adapting to the new lead standard. And then we did get the money from the city for the vacant readiness in order to have those contractors come onboard, but we still needed to go through the JOCs process, get those contractors onboard in hopes of catching up. And I think we're, I think as I said now, as we're doing 150 to 200 units a month, we are starting to catch up on that.
All right, and I have one more question Chair, is that okay? You know, obviously I represent a rapidly gentrifying community and NITRA is one of the only forms of affordable housing for many of the residents that are trying to stay within the community. And I wanted to ask, how is the agency selecting tenants for these units that, you know, have been repaired, have been through the lead abatement? Do residents of a neighborhood get first consideration? Or is it, is it through the regular process in, in terms of how tenants become tenants?
Yep, as, as I mentioned, NITRA uses the Tenant Selection and Assignment Plan to match vacant units to folks that are on the waitlist.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you Councilmember Ose. We'd like to recognize, we've been joined by Councilmember Rafael Salamanca. Thank you Councilmember. Now Councilmember Wrestler?
Thank you so much Chair Aviles. I have to say, you consistently hold hearings on exactly the topics we need to be engaging on and I really appreciate your leadership. And I, I will just first also say, Eva, Chief Operating Officer Trimble, you know, greatly appreciate your many years of service to our city and have enormous empathy for the team at NITRA who face extraordinary challenges. And you mentioned the $40 billion physical needs assessment and the capital needs that we know so well, but it's an agency that has suffered from decade upon decade of profound underfunding. And folks are trying, which I appreciate, but at the end of the day, it's our job to provide oversight on the outcomes. And, you know, when I look through this math, and I, I like to, to make it as simple as I can for myself with this data, I am outraged. You know, to see the vacancy rate increase sixfold in Mayor Adams' first year in office, to see the number of units that are in the under renovation, non-dwelling category increase by 60%, to see the number of apartments where we've even just identified a family for move-in decrease by a third in just one year is profoundly troubling. And, you know, I'm going to quote the mayor, some will, which he did at his preliminary budget statement. He said, "Some will argue that the vacancy reduction results, some will argue that vacancy reduction results in agencies not being able to do their jobs. Don't believe them." I believe them. I believe them, I know they are right. If you want to tell the 70,000 people who are in shelter, who are desperately in need of these NITRA apartments, I believe they are right. If you want to talk about the tens of thousands of people that are desperately waiting for decades on the NITRA waiting list, I believe them. They are right. Our inability to properly staff NITRA is hurting families who need housing. We could move 10,000 people out of, of our homeless shelters immediately if we fixed up these apartments and got this work done. So for me, the focus is the failure of NITRA to hire, the failure of every agency in this administration to hire. We cannot do our jobs. We are failing the people who depend on these services the most. You gave thoughtful answers and explanations on shifts in lead paint policy and shifts in how you're linking new families to apartments. But to me, the critical question is NITRA staffing. So could you give us some insight? How many people are working at NITRA today overall?
I'd have to get back to you with the exact numbers. I don't want to misspeak. I believe our current head, headcount is in the range of 12,000, but I, we will follow up with the exact number for you.
So I'd like to follow up on the total headcount and the headcount that work on turnover and what the, and the units for turnover. We in the past, in the de Blasio administration, had dedicated specialized teams that focused on turnover to fix up apartments so that we could avoid these unacceptable and egregious delays. And if NITRA doesn't have the internal capacity because of the gazillion challenges you all face, then HPD and DOB and FDNY and DCAST and every city agency should be lending capacity and focusing resources on fixing up NITRA apartments so that 10,000 people can move out of homeless shelters to instead of, as you explained, a 13-month delay before the 3,300 apartments that are currently vacant are going to be fully brought online because you're doing it at 250 units a month. So we have 3,300 units offline, fixing up about 250 a month. In March of 2024, I will be a 40-year-old. And while I'm looking forward to that birthday, we shouldn't have to wait that long.
I don't disagree with some of your sentiments there, Councilmember. And if you were to do the math on our average cost of 45,000 a unit in the vacant readiness program, which we are, you know, using the contractors specialized and focused for this, it, it would cost about $260 million to, to fix these units.
Forty-five, just help me for a second. So capital spending or non-capital spending? This is expense. So, and how much per unit?
We, we're averaging 45,000.
45,000.
It ranges from 20, 28 to 63.
I realize that that's a big number, but do you know what else is a big number? We spend a comparable amount in our homeless, to keep a family in homeless shelters every single year. So to spend that same amount of money to keep people stuck in a homeless shelter in often unacceptable conditions versus providing them with a permanent home, I'd rather fix up the apartments and provide permanent housing.
I would agree with you and I'd appreciate the support. We, we've had a tremendous relationship with this council as well with the administration and our partner, and the partner agencies, including OMB, to focus on this priority. I also want to add, there are, there are some nuances in the numbers.
I don't believe it. I hear from every single agency that they are blocked at every turn by OMB when it comes to hiring. So we want to see a breakdown, not just of where you are today, but where that, what the trajectory is that you've experienced on this hiring over the past years. I know that DOB and HPD have no staff to spare right now. The former staff, the former resources that when you were in a leadership role at HPD, you could provide support and lend and help NITRA so that they would have resources to fix up these apartments, they don't have any extra staff. They are down, they've been cut to the bone. So I, we need to understand the trajectory of NITRA staffing and the folks that work on these projects so that we can provide the rigorous oversight and we can fight in this budget to make sure that these apartments are brought online. Because people, we, this is a crisis that is created by this administration and their failure to fix up the apartments. It is absolutely unacceptable that in just 12 months, under Mayor Adams' rule, we have seen, Mayor Adams' leadership, we have seen a six-fold increase in the number of vacant apartments in New York City public housing. It is unacceptable. We should fix it in this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your advocacy on our behalf.
Thank you Councilmember. Next, Councilmember Ayala?
I don't know that I want to follow that, but. I don't have the same level of enthusiasm. I only had one cup of coffee this morning. But, uh-huh, but kind of piggybacking off of what Councilmember Wrestler was saying, in the preliminary budget, we saw that there was a cut to the unit that is tasked with repairing vacant units and making them habitable, rentable. Do you know, what, what impact is that going to, is that going to slow down your ability to, to rent those units?
We don't believe we're going to see any impact in, in this fiscal year. We are on target to turn over 2,283 apartments as part of the vacant readiness program for this fiscal year, regardless of any cuts in the, in the budget.
Okay. Now, out of those 202,080 units, because you, you mentioned you had 5,900 vacancies?
Yes.
Right, a little bit over 5,900 vacancies? So can you explain to me how, guys, sorry. Could you explain, I'm a little bit confused and a little bit concerned about what's going to happen with the trust? Because my understanding is that differently than how we have been doing PACT and RAD, where the repairs are made with the family still, you know, in place, that through the, the trust plan, families are going to be required to move out of their units anywhere between eight months and five years. How is NITRA, I think we have 2,500 units that have been approved so far? How is NITRA preparing to move those families over when the vacancy rate is so low?
So we, we, our goal is to keep families in their community as much as possible. And so the goal would be to use vacant units within the developments that vote into the trust to facilitate those relocations and, and keep them close to their current communities.
I mean, I'm looking at the vacancy rates in my district and I don't see, I don't see how NITRA would be able to do that. These numbers are relatively low in terms of the number of vacant units.
I mean, there's, we still have to see the, the developments that choose to go through the trust and we're happy to talk more with you about that process as we get closer. Obviously, we're waiting to see who votes into the trust and we'll work with those developments and, and those families to keep them in their communities as part of the process as much as possible.
But is NITRA starting to reserve units as of now in preparation for the, for the trust?
We are, we are evaluating all of our vacancies right now, obviously with these competing demands to, to house everyone. And we also are, are talking to many residents and resident leaders across the city about their interest in the trust. So we have to see who, who in the end will vote in.
And I'm not in any way, shape or form saying that I approve of the trust. I want to make that very clear. I'm just curious. I'm just curious, because looking at the vacancy rate and comparing that to the number of units that had been approved, it seems to me like we're going to probably run into a brick wall at some point. And my final question is, well, I think you answered that question, which was, what was the number of estimated new applicant movements, which you said 250 a year? Movements?
No, we're turning over units at about 150 to 200 a month.
Okay, so do you know what the estimated number of new applicant movements is per year?
In 2022, we moved in approximately 1,880 households.
1,880 households. That's great. Last question, sorry, because I've been thinking about this. The eligibility for individuals living in shelter, they used to have first priority, and then under the Bloomberg administration, that policy shifted so that they would have some priority, but they would, basically, I think they had an eighth, they were number eight priority, which meant that they weren't ever going to get called. Has that changed, and has there been any conversation about changing that to ensure that families that are in shelter get first priority for those vacant units?
So the priority did not change under the de Blasio administration? I mean, it didn't, it wasn't reduced, it was elevated. So the...
No, it was under Bloomberg that it was, that it was...
Oh, I'm sorry. So under de Blasio, in 2014, the families experiencing homelessness priority, as referred by DHS, have an N zero priority, or, excuse me, or a W zero priority if they're a working family, and they have the highest priority along with other city referred referrals. And so for the applicant list, they do have the highest, they maintain the highest priorities.
I was told that that was only under the, if, that only happened if a social worker or a city agency was referring that individual to NYCHA?
That's correct. It happens, the referrals.
So not every, so not every person that is living in shelter that applies for public housing is getting that level of priority?
That's correct. It has to be city referred by DHS.
Okay, so that's what I, that's what I, I think that that's my question, is, is there any conversation about changing that and reverting back to the original rule, which automatically made shelter residents eligible and gave them a first priority?
We can take that into consideration and explore that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Speaker. Next, we'll call Councilmember Salamanca.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was having a conversation with my colleague, because when I look at these numbers, I mean, look, in 2021, my vacancies were 36, and in 2022, my vacancies are 153. It's extremely high. But I just find it unfair to blame this current administration when the past administration was there for eight years and knew the failures of NYCHA, and it was through their failed policies and kicking the can down the road that we're here today with all these capital needs in our NYCHA developments. So my question here is, in pre-pandemic, I read that NYCHA had a 90% or higher rate of collecting rent. Am I correct?
I believe so, but I don't have the rent.
And then that rate, when the pandemic hit, it decreased.
Yes.
Correct? All right. Has NYCHA gone back to these empty vacancies, these vacancies, are they due to evictions that NYCHA has performed now that you are collecting rent? Are you evicting NYCHA residents who are not paying rent now?
I don't believe we're doing any evictions right now, but I can't speak for our law department on that.
So I just don't understand how in 2021, Adam Houses had zero vacancies, and in 2022, they have 29. How? How is that even possible? So 29 families just moved out?
I'm not familiar with the data that you're presenting, so I'm happy to follow up with you separately to talk about the vacancies in your development.
I just don't understand how in Jackson Houses in 2021, there were four vacancies, and in 2022, there were 22, there were 18. In St. Mary's Houses in 2021, there were 19, and a year later, there are 41. It just doesn't make sense. Why are these apartments becoming vacant? Are families moving out, or is NYCHA evicting them?
We, as all other landlords in New York City, we're under moratorium. We are not evicting, the vacancy rates are not because of evictions. However, our law department has restarted some limited non-payment cases, very limited, but as Eva said, we can't speak to the law department's procedures right now.
Is the law department here?
No.
No, but we can follow up with you.
Okay, I'm sorry. I don't have limited time, and I want to ask my questions. How do you get from 36 vacancies in one year to 153 the next year? It just doesn't make sense. How, where are these families going?
We do have some turnover, so we have a vacancy rate of 3.7%, which means some families do leave NYCHA.
We're talking about a difference of 117 units. I just don't understand what's happening here. Now...
We will follow up on your development-specific questions.
I'm sorry?
We will follow up separately on your development-specific questions.
I think, Madam Chair, I think in the future, when we have these hearings, we should request that NYCHA come with the appropriate individuals to answer our questions. Many city agencies tend to do that, say, well, we're going to follow up, because they purposely do not bring the appropriate parties to answer questions because they don't want to answer the right question, and in return, they say they'll follow up, and they never follow up. Just finally, I just want to point out, and this is just, we've had many conversations about warehousing throughout the city of New York. I've had many conversations with developers, with property owners, and their frustration is, and this is something that I think we as a council should take up and maybe speak to our state, their frustration is, there's a rent-stabilized apartment, you have individuals that have lived there for 10, 15 years. Those apartments, when they move out, need many repairs. Many repairs can lead up to $50,000, $60,000. They feel that their investment is not worth their investment spending $50,000, $60,000 when they're going to get $1,800 or $2,000 in rent. And so they choose, because many of them, I've spoken to developers who are smaller developers, they feel that they just cannot afford it. And so it's just frustrating to hear that in the private sector, and it's frustrating to hear that in the public sector as well, when we're talking about units that may need repairs of $28,000 to $63,000, and because NYCHA feels that they do not have those funds, they choose to leave those apartments vacant. With that, I yield my time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. We have been adamant around following up on information that is outstanding at the hearings and making sure that becomes publicly available to folks. So thank you, and yes, we do require and want agency representation to come fully prepared to answer questions. I appreciate you. Thank you, Councilmember. With that, I think we will resume into some of the other questions that we had. Some of them are moving back to setting baseline and getting clarity on the specific information again.
Chair, can I ask one thing really quickly, on the last note that you brought up?
So before we move on, I will pass along to Councilmember Ose.
Thank you so much. It would be really helpful if questions that were not answered in hearings were not only responded to our offices, but maybe posted on a public notice board, whether it's your website, your Twitter, your social media, of questions that are asked in these hearings so that people, not only us, can view the responses of them. I think that level of accountability would be great between both the council and the admin, and it also would be helpful for NYCHA residents and folks that care to know about what we are questioning within these hearings. Just a ask.
Yes, and that's something actually we are working with council on to make sure it's publicly noticed, which hasn't been done in the past. So thank you, Councilmember.
So back to, just some clarity on the non-dwelling category, back to that. In terms of, can you tell us how many of the NYCHA apartments in this category are labeled due to renovations, and which ones are due to non-residential use?
So the permanent off-rent roll category is, any apartments being used for non-residential use are in the permanent off-rent roll category. The temporary off-rent roll use are intended for residential use, and in the case of hospitality units, are being used as active residential apartments. However, the rest of the category includes issues of apartments awaiting major capital repairs or have other hazardous conditions that we are working to bait.
Right, and so we're going to get the breakdown of those two distinctions.
Yes, we'll send that all to you.
Right, we covered that earlier. Thank you. How often are these apartments inspected, and how often is the status reviewed and updated across the three categories?
So the distinction of putting an apartment on or off the rent roll is conducted by property management, depending on the needs of the apartment, and that is then reviewed centrally by our tenancy department underneath Ms. Audi.
And how often does that happen?
When it gets designated into that category.
So once the units are designated, they don't receive another inspection?
I'd have to check on the inspection status, but the, once they're in that category, we do review all vacant units with our property management teams to determine next steps. So for example, major apartments awaiting major capital repairs would be evaluated for their capital timelines and other such needs.
And are those apartments ever, is there a second opinion on those? Do you ever, how do you manage varied assessments on a unit?
So the second opinion would be the approval of the tenancy department, and it started by property management and then reviewed by tenancy department.
So is the tenancy department actually conducting inspections, or are they reviewing the paperwork that was submitted and making determinations based on that?
We review the paperwork or the memo submitted with the request.
Got it. So since December 2021, in Red Hook and the development I represent, an additional nine units in Red Hook West and 29 units in Red Hook East have been deemed non-dwelling. Why does this number continue to increase in Red Hook?
I'd have to check on those specific designations for those developments and get back to you.
Could you tell us why theoretically there would be such a dramatic increase in non-dwelling units? What could be the litany of reasons for that?
So again, for the temporary off-rent roll, I would assume that these are going to the temporary off-rent roll category, not permanent, so that they're not being used for non-residential uses. But without speaking specifically to your case in Red Hook East and West, that could happen if the repairs in the apartment are so significant that they need some form of major capital rehab, as opposed to the skilled trades repair work that a typical apartment gets as part of the turnover.
Got it. We'll follow up on that case. In terms of the mayor's publication from just last year, Housing Our Neighbors: A Blueprint for Housing and Homelessness, the mayor outlines five key pillars to address the housing crisis in New York City, the first of which is to transform NYCHA. Transforming NYCHA then gets broken down into a few components, which includes transforming how NYCHA delivers services to its residents. Can you help us understand, who does NYCHA define as a resident?
Residents are any authorized household member within a public housing unit.
And does a resident include a tenant who's placed a deposit on a vacant unit but has not been able to move into that unit due to delays within NYCHA?
They may be a resident if they are a transferee, if they're transferring from another location. If they are an applicant, we still consider them an applicant.
And with regards to getting residents moved into vacant units, since Housing Our Neighbors was published, how has NYCHA made strides towards transforming service delivery in that area?
So the main changes that have happened in the past year, as I've mentioned, is obviously complying with the city's new .5 standard for lead testing and lead abatement, and making that standard throughout all of our turnover process. But in addition, working through the vacant readiness program with the funding we received from the administration, we have brought on vendors to work primarily in turning over apartments, recognizing that we needed some form of dedicated resource to do this work. The vacant readiness program is targeting just over 2,200 units through the end of June to complete turnover.
Great. In terms of the mayor's blueprint, it also seeks to address inter-agency collaboration, knowing that vacant units can sit waiting for inspection from different agencies. What new measures have been put into place in order to help speed up that inter-agency collaboration?
I'm sorry, Councilmember, I don't want to misspeak, and I don't have that information with us today, but we will definitely follow up separately with that information.
Okay, can you tell us, let's move on to the vacant readiness program. Can you tell us how many people are employed by the vacancy readiness program?
There are no employees dedicated to the vacancy readiness program on a funding payroll sense. The vacancy readiness program uses primarily vendors, in addition to some NYCHA staff that are already working at the properties and in our skilled trades department to finish the turnover process. But this program was conceived to, again, hire vendors in order to supplement and expand our capacity to turnover units.
So who oversees the readiness program?
The readiness program is overseen partially by my office to track the work towards the 2,200 units, and then the work is split between Healthy Homes, which does the lead and asbestos testing and abatement work, and the Department of Management and Planning, which houses the vendors to do the general repair work.
In fiscal '23 budget, it looks like NYCHA suffered a $31.2 million pass-through deduction to its vacant unit readiness program. Can you tell us the impact this had on the program?
I believe those numbers are for the five-year financial plan, and we don't see any impact for the 2023 goals that we've set forth for the 2,200 units.
So what was the total cost of the program in fiscal '23?
We're expecting $78 million in 2023 for the vacant readiness program.
Is that 78, that's the fiscal '23 total cost?
Yes.
And that is after the $31.2 million cut, or before?
That is after.
So the program was a $100 million program?
The five-year financial plan, as of the November financial plan, is a $250 million program.
Right, but in terms of fiscal '23, the total was $100 million if 78 is after the cut.
The numbers I have for the program was that it did have $85 million originally scheduled in fiscal year '23, and then as part of the November plan, it is now $78 million. The other important thing to remember with the vacant readiness program is that I believe it was originally budgeted with the assumption that every unit would have to undergo both lead and asbestos abatement, and that would mean the high end, or $63,000 a unit. But not every unit is testing positive for both of those conditions, and therefore, we do have an average of 45 million, so that is why we don't, sorry, 45,000 per unit, and that is why we don't expect to see any change in our ability to deliver the target of 2,200 units for this fiscal year.
Got it. We understand that the total peg represents 10% of the overall budget for the vacancy unit readiness program. Do you still feel that this peg will have no impact on the ability to turn over vacant units?
We are working closely with OMB on this program, and we provide them with... and we provide them with real-time actual costs. And we're confident that we'll be able to continue turning over units with the funding that we have.
And so in the November financial plan, the most recent preliminary budget documents released this month for fiscal '24, we see NYCHA incurring OTPS cuts of $7.4 million in '23 and a total of about $28.5 million in the out years. How will this impact NYCHA's service delivery? And more specifically, as it relates to turning over units?
We're continuing to work with OMB on the units that we're turning over. We'll have to see what our funding situation is next year, but we are staying the course with looking to turn over 150 to 200 units a year and using the city funding to have the vendors to supplement our work.
I feel like I'm hearing you say, "We're gonna try our best, we don't know", without saying a cut in funding means a cut in vendors means a cut in service delivery.
The truth is, it's hard to say, again, because of the level of lead and asbestos. We have to see how many of the units will test positive and need the more funding versus not. OMB right now has committed to funding our actual costs and we've been able to make that work.
Of the 5,900 units, have they all been tested for?
No, they have not all been tested yet.
And so, I know in your earlier testimony, you noted how many units have been tested over the last fiscal year. Why are these vacant units not being tested?
We are working through testing every vacant unit, but we're testing about 50 to 60 testings a week for lead and we're slowly working through that entire list.
So how does the list get prioritized?
It's a combination of both. And the numbers I quoted in the testimony were just vacant units, but overall, our lead testing program is both vacant and occupied apartments. We're obviously looking at children under six, apartments with children under six. But for the vacant units, we have identified the 2,200 in the vacant readiness program that we are focusing on emergency transfers and families experiencing homelessness. And so we are focusing on apartments that have been matched to those prospective tenants in order to get them housed.
Can you provide the council with that priority criteria that you use?
Sure.
Thank you. And what's the impact of vacant apartments on federal state funding?
Right now, and we have not seen any impact on our funding formulas from HUD based on our vacant units. The funding formula for HUD does have a component of vacant unit, but NYCHA has never had any funding withheld because of vacant units. The vacant unit calculation that HUD uses in their formula is quite complicated and it's not a straightforward vacancy rate like we are reporting now. It's more nuanced to include factors such as the length of time a unit has been vacant. And it's also specific to the individual development. And so they use those two factors within their formula. And so it's a different formula than a straightforward vacancy rate. In addition, the vacancy is just one component of the overall HUD funding formula as part of their appropriations.
Got it. But it definitely seems like the residents see the impact of this in terms of their TPU funds, since that's tracked so closely.
On the TPU funds, there is an impact.
And how about in terms of state funding?
There is no, there is no set formula for state funding.
Great. In terms of, has the growth in vacancies over the last year pushed NYCHA near any thresholds that would impact any potential federal funding?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Yeah, I think you covered this in your prior response, but I just want to make sure. Has the growth in vacancies, which has been, you know, significant over the last year, does it push NYCHA to any thresholds that would potentially impact the federal funding?
No, we don't believe we're near any of those thresholds. Our finance department does manage, they run those formulas and they monitor that, but we are not anywhere near any threshold. In addition, we do work with HUD on vacant unit management. So, for example, the permanent off-rent rule categories actually need to be approved by HUD and are regulated by HUD. And so we work very closely with them for that, both permanent and in some cases, the temporary off-rent rule as well.
In terms of, we just noted how resident association with the Tenant Participation Activity Funds are directly impacted by vacancies in funding. Are the, and we heard from the tenant president that they are not systematically provided with clear information. Can you talk to us about how the information is provided to TA presidents and what is provided?
In regards to the TPA funds?
Yes.
I can't speak, but I'm happy to follow up on the TPA fund communications. I do believe that the formula is done at a single point in time and HUD determines that point in time where that vacant unit count is determined and sets the funding formula from that point in time.
Is there a specific reason why the summary statements that are provided to the resident associations don't specify whether vacancies are Section Eight or Section Nine? And does NYCHA, can NYCHA provide in terms of the 5,900 apartments, are they, what percentage of them are Section Eight and what percentage are Section Nine?
We can follow up with that information.
Could we explore providing tenants with more specific and meaningful information around vacancies?
Yes, we're happy to work with the council and this committee to talk about communication improvements. Always happy to hear your suggestions from what you're hearing from your constituents and to improve our process.
Do you have a mechanism that you receive communications from the TA representation or residents in general around this?
We receive communication in all forms. I've received many of these same phone calls from residents directly, calling my number to talk about how long they've been waiting for apartments. And it's absolutely unfortunate. It's not something we're happy about, but we are reiterating that this is extremely important work that we're doing to make sure the apartments are lead-free and asbestos-safe. But I know we have more work to do on the general repair side, but we take all of those phone calls, all of those complaints. And if you or your other councilmembers have those as well, please escalate them up so we can address them as needed.
I smile when I ask that question because I know NYCHA tenants are incredibly vocal and will ensure that we have heard what they have to say. So it is not for want of NYCHA residents not being vocal, but how their feedback is truly integrated and turned into action, responsive action. What conversations has NYCHA had with the governor's office and other state electeds to help fund NYCHA's capital and maintenance needs? And I'll include operational needs as well.
We are having ongoing conversations with, you know, both the Assembly and the Senate, as well as the governor's office, on our ongoing capital needs as well as expense needs. We have a very open line of communication and those conversations are ongoing.
What's been the specific asks?
I'd have to get back to you on the specific asks, although I know Brian Honan is up in Albany right now as we speak, so we will follow up with you on that.
I'm sure he's not asking for as much money as he should be, but we'll talk to Brian when he returns. In terms of the physical needs assessment, you know, we know this is an accounting of the short and long-term capital needs for each of the developments. The last assessment was done in 2017, we know, as performed every five years. Has NYCHA completed the new physical needs assessment? And when does NYCHA plan to release this information?
Our Asset and Capital Management Division is leading the efforts to update and produce a new physical needs assessment. I can't speak to the status of their work, but we'll definitely follow up with you on that.
Great, and I know there have been some clearly articulated shortcomings and how those assessments have been done in the past. And I'd love to see how the asset and capital department has incorporated that specific feedback in their work. So we look forward to hearing back from them on this issue. I'm going to take a pause and hand it over to Councilmember Ressler, who would like to ask a follow-up question.
Thank you, I promise to be nicer. There were two questions I wanted to ask you about. Firstly, I realize that the purpose of this hearing is to highlight the increased vacancies across the NYCHA portfolio. In my district in particular, NYCHA is supposed to be holding vacant apartments to facilitate renovations at Guanis and Wykoff Gardens. And it's really important that we have vacant units available or the entire comp mod budget is going to go up in smoke on hotel rooms and other things that lead to no long-term improvements for NYCHA residents. And so I have to say, I'd been told for many months that no units or every available unit in Guanis and Wykoff and that you're starting to prioritize surrounding developments are being held for tenants to be able to move upon renovations. And to see that there are only two vacant units across Guanis and Wykoff according to December of 2022 in the paper that we've been provided by this committee is really disappointing. Do you have any insight or, should I take this up with the comp mod team? I'm on the phone with them in 18 minutes.
I will provide you updated information because that does not sound correct. We have been actively holding units at Guanis, Wykoff and the surrounding developments to facilitate comp mod.
Okay, good.
And I'm confident we're going to have those units available. As I mentioned to Councilmember Ayala, our goal is to keep all families in their community during a comprehensive modernization or a trust or any type of work that we're doing in the developments. And so that is our goal. We have been working with those developments to hold units available. Those units are in our temporary off-rent rule category because they are being held for that major renovation work.
Okay, so perhaps our internal data process was inaccurate, but I do appreciate if you could. And I think it will be helpful for our office and I'll follow up with Michelle and their team, but to get consistent updates on the status of how many units are being held. The second piece was just following up on Councilmember De La Rosa's questions. I have to admit, my staff has had an extremely challenging time in getting attention on emergency and safety transfers. I could share heartbreaking stories with you about a woman who was attacked when she was nine months pregnant in April of last year. Her kids are being threatened, she is unsafe. It's been nine months and we can't get the transfer. There are DV cases, there are safety cases that are really serious. And we bring it to the staff. My staff knows how much of a pain in the ass I am, so they follow up constantly and we're not getting attention or results. And so I appreciate you laid out the process for Carmen well, but like, it's not happening when at least our offices, my office, is reaching out to get attention on this. What should we do? Like, I mean, what should I do to get these emergency transfers properly addressed?
So first I'll say, we, you know, we understand the unfortunate situation that many of these transfer residents are waiting far too long for their transfers. And they are, and many of them are in dire needs, whether it's domestic violence or health-related issues or, you know, other situations. The transfer process, as we've said, can still take a long time. If there is someone in a very specific and significant need, please flag that to us and we could, if necessary, we could facilitate an emergency relocation. And that's a temporary transfer in order to protect someone's, you know, for a life, health, safety reason. But otherwise, we're happy to follow up on any other cases offline and provide specifics as we can.
Okay, I just, it's really apparent that this process isn't working well enough. And so I hope, you know, I know you have your hands more than, more than, more than full in the number of challenges you have to address in this role as Chief Operating Officer of Housing Authority. And I genuinely appreciate your service and your work. But I'd ask that systems issues be addressed on emergency transfers, on safety transfers, because we just can't have situations where people in our communities are in unsafe situations and waiting for nine or 10 or 12 months to get a transfer. It's just unacceptable, so thank you very much. And thank you, Chair Aviles, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, council.
Councilmember Aviles, if you'd allow me, my team has been amazing and they did send me the breakdown of Section Nine versus Section Eight, if I can share that. So for Section Nine, we have 5,680 units vacant. And for Section Eight, we have 284.
Great, and we'd request that any reporting done to the TA presidents on vacancies also note which units are Section Eight and which are Section Nine. And just an overall meaningful report. I think having TA presidents have to do the math around their funding reductions and what that actually means in terms of vacancies is not an appropriate way to engage with our tenant leaders. So, I guess going off of Councilmember Ressler's questions on transfers, in particular, Rad and PACT. If a tenant is waiting on a transfer for a vacant public housing apartment, but the development converts to a PACT site, what happens to their application? And does NYCHA continue to honor the transfer request?
Unfortunately, once the location converts to Section Eight, it's a completely different program, so their public housing transfer is no longer valid. They're not allowed to transfer from Section Nine to Section Eight under PACT.
But there are Section Eight housing units that are managed by NYCHA that are not in private management, does that also apply to them as well?
If they apply for a portability transfer, so if they apply, and I apologize, I'm not a Section Eight expert, but generally, they can apply for a transfer within the Section Eight program and they may be able to join the Section Eight waitlist at those NYCHA developments.
Does NYCHA know how many housing residents have requested for transfer that were blocked out because of Rad, PACT conversions?
We can follow up on that data.
Okay, thank you. In terms of, when developments are converted into Rad and PACT, does NYCHA retain data information and does do the private management companies report on vacancy rates?
I'd have to check with our real estate development team. I think they are in communication with those developers and would receive information upon ask, but I'm not entirely sure if there's a formal reporting, but we can find out for you.
Great, we'd like to know how many apartments under the Rad and PACT conversion program are currently vacant and the average waiting time for turnaround. I think similarly, you know, under Rad and PACT conversion, we've heard reports of vacancies being held for repair and repairs never quite materializing. So I think we'd like to understand better how NYCHA is actually performing oversight over Rad and PACT developments to ensure that there's also not a warehousing happening in Rad and PACT sites as well. Let's see. One thing I wanted to follow up on in terms of the, whoops, I lost my way. We met, Ms. Torres noted the loss of COVID, the loss of tenants in COVID. Do we have any sense of how many of the units are vacant because of COVID?
No, we don't have that level of data.
Do we have a sense of what is precipitating the vacancies?
We don't have the specific details on the vacancies, but we can get some general details on that. We do experience regular turnover. We haven't seen that big of an increase in our turnover rate just compared to previous years, even though our vacancies are higher. There's not like a huge jump in the amount of people that are leaving NYCHA. It's pretty consistent. But there could be many reasons for people, you know, leaving public housing.
Right. I guess it, you know, I, I think it's incongruous, right? When you look at this significant increase in vacancies and not, and then here while turnover is still kind of standard rate that you've experienced over the years. There's, there's something contradictory there that is, is troubling.
Well, we nor, we were normally turning them over a lot quicker. So that drastic number of apartments seemingly vacant wasn't as apparent.
Got it. So one of the things that is a consistent theme, I could think across all the hearings, is really communication. You heard from the testimony of, of the two residents at the top how deeply problematic and the communication has been from the NYCHA side. Can you walk me through what the communication protocol is with approved tenants for move-in dates and information regarding to inspections and timelines?
So when, when a prospective tenant receives their letter that they've been matched to an apartment, the apartment previously used to then begin the turnover process. And we had, we would advise the prospective tenant to work with their management office for any updates, since the management office would have that most detailed information about what's happening at their apartment. Our goal is that with our new policy where you're not matched to a unit until it's ready, a lot of these communication issues will no longer happen because you will be contacted, come in, view the apartment, begin the leasing process, and move in. So we are hoping that this is something that we are, we are phasing out of. However, right now, we encourage all prospective tenants that, that are matched to a unit to continue following up with their management office for updates on that. And we are also exploring other ways to, to better communicate with them.
So in terms of, so I, I hear you that just removing that, providing information so early on without clarity could, could improve the process significantly. What kind of training, I mean, what you, what we also hear is that it's justice by zip code, right? Where different management offices have different ways of working, have different communication styles, some better than others. What kind of, what are the expectations for managers? And what kind of training do they receive around how these, how this process is communicated to, to either transfer residents or prospective residents?
So the, the managers are, are aware of our guidance and procedures that they have to follow when it comes to our turnover process. And we do know that we have a range of skill sets within that, those managements. We hear that from our residents all the time. So, but they are trained in our guidance of how, of how to communicate this information.
Are residents ever provided with a concrete document around instructions and timelines related to their units?
I believe when they get their match letter, they're notified of their unit and their development and the contact information for the, for the property management office at their development.
Are those notices provided in multiple languages?
They can, they are available in multiple languages, but they are not normally sent in multiple languages.
Got it. So at the, at the front end, there's no inquiry around the appropriate language for the communication? A tenant has to find management office to let them know what, what the language is?
At this time, that's the way it works.
Okay. So I understand there's a tenant data system that, actually, let me take, let me take it a step back. In terms of the, the, the tenant that testified at the top of the hearing, right, was, was contacted. There's an interesting interplay happening with the shelter system that she was in and with a NYCHA employee. And I don't know if any things were lost in translation repeatedly, but what, what, who engages with the shelter system for a prospective applicant that has, you know, signed and waiting for a property?
So NYCHA works with our DHS contacts and they manage the shelters?
And is that, is that the, the super, the building manager? Who is, who at NYCHA? We could never find who the person at NYCHA was that informed the, the applicant that actually, there was no, she had no apartment after eight months of waiting and calling on a weekly basis. So who is responsible for, for interfacing?
So generally, property management is responsible for relaying information to a prospective tenant. For DHS, there is oversight from my office under the applications and tenancy administration department with our contacts at DHS. But we don't regularly communicate with those folks. They're, once they have been matched with a unit, their communication is generally with property management.
So in terms of, we understand there's a ta, a tenant data system. What kind of information is stored there and who has access to this information? And how is tenants' privacy protected?
So NYCHA has more than one tenant data system. So we have our customer relationship management system, which is Zeeboll, that manages the application process. Once they become tenants, that goes into a separate system, unfortunately. And then those two systems will, are integrated to some extent. NYCHA adheres to general privacy rules and regulations that are required by HUD. I can't speak to that specifically, but we can get you more information on our data privacy.
Got it. And the reason for context that we're asking is we saw a total breach when not only did someone who sounds like shouldn't have access to, to her information gave her very wrong information, which was, and its direct impact, right, was her health and the, the health of her children. And so, you know, I think we cannot underscore enough the direct impacts of the delays of vacancy, the misinformation that gets put out because of the vacancies and how people are being shuffled between systems. And the cost, quite frankly, I think council member Ressler was, was right to note. The, the net cost of us as a city agency investing in a homeless shelter system that is significantly more than the $45,000 it would cost to renovate an apartment on an annual basis. It just, it doesn't make any sense at all. So I, you know, to underscore the importance of training, the correct information and clear protocols, which I'm not sure, I heard we, we have clear communication protocols on, on these procedures. If there is, we would like to see what the expectation that is laid out for staff around how they communicate the vacancies and the timeframes. Because what our offices sees and hears is often no communication at all or a form letter with one sentence that is incomprehensible, that doesn't really tell you much of anything. So we look forward to receiving that. I just have a few more last questions. Do you have any questions? In terms of the, the 2021 housing vacancy survey identifies seven major maintenance deficiencies. Heating equipment breakdowns, additional heating required, presence of mice or rats, cracks and holes in interior walls and ceilings, floor holes, broken plaster and peeling paint, and water leakage. Can you provide us with a breakdown on how many vacant units have issues with heating equipment breakdown requiring each of these categories, requiring additional heating, the presence of mice and rats, cracks and holes, floor holes, broken plaster and peeling paint, and lastly, water leakage?
We don't track all of those in the same way as presented in the vacancy survey. So for example, our, our vacant units are inspected for what they need for, for general repairs. But for example, heating is a system, is a building system and not necessarily tied specifically to that vacant unit and would not impact the turnover of the vacant unit. We would be working hard to restore heat if there is a, a heating system failure, but it's not part of the turnover process. But we can, I'd have to see what we're, how we're tracking the individual needs of the apartment, of which apartment maybe needs carpentry versus plastering. But they all get, I think, I think they all get some level of all of, all of those skilled trades because of the extensive work that's needed. There's usually extermination inspections performed, but we'll, I'll see how the data is tracked and get back to you on that.
Yeah, I think I hear, you know, the, the kind of building-wide issues versus the specific apartment issues. And because of the, the, the age of the developments, it's safe to assume that more than one of these factors is there. But what I also hear is like, it's everything and nothing at the same time. And, and residents, you know, I think when I look at the vacancies in Red Hook West that have increased from 18 to 63 units. I think in order to tactically address these vacancy issues, right, we need to understand where, what specifically we're attacking, right? Because it also implicates the contractors and the vendors that we're using. And so I, I would love to see more specific granular information on what are the challenges because they're so disparate. There are no particular patterns of the vacancies across NYCHA, as we noted earlier. But a, a more refined report on what it, what it is that we are actually facing and the particular plan to address that with an articulated sense of criteria. Can you tell us who, who determines prioritization across the portfolio of how vacant units move into readiness?
So right now, we are, we are working on a combination of, of prioritizing the units that have been matched to prospective tenants, as well as how we can most efficiently address the, the repairs needed. So for example, under the vacant readiness program where we have contractors going out, it's most efficient to give them developments that have significant number of vacancies so they can come in and do 10, 15, 20 units at once, rather than having to redeploy for a unit here and a unit there. So we do a combination of both looking at the, the matched tenants and how efficiently we can deploy the contractor resources. The other units are, are then handled through the skilled trades in that neighborhood and development, you know, as, as we can get to them.
Got it. In terms of, oh, I just forgot my question. In terms of, on the backend, when, when apartments are ready for, for tenants, who, who reviews that work to ensure that it's completed and to standard?
The property management office will review the work. We've had, we've started in some small cases, also using our quality assurance department to review the work, to review the vacant turnover work. It's something we wanted to explore as an option, but we'd have, we would need additional resources to scale that up. But the property management office will review the work and sign off on the apartment as being done.
Thank you. And I'd like to, I definitely would like to follow up on the specific vacancies and also not only the significant increase in vacancies, but also the significant increase in non-dwelling units as well for Red Hook offline. I think, I think with that, we might be ready, I think we're ready to hear public testimony. I want to thank you for your time and, and answers, and we will continue this conversation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll now go to public testimony. We have, we have several or a few folks on Zoom that we're going to do first, and then we will continue. I'll read the person who is going to be unmuted on Zoom, the next person who'll be ready, and then the third person who's here in the room. And we're going to start with Ms. Dana Eldon. You should be receiving a prompt to unmute yourself.
Hi, good morning. Oh, good afternoon now. Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Eldon, thank you.
Thank you, and good afternoon to you all, you committee members. Ms. Tremble, I'm a TA resident and also the TA president for St. Mary's Park Houses in the South Bronx. And recently, as all TAs received, a letter from engagement regarding, well, really from Ms. Bovay Hyatt's office, informing of us of our funding for the year depending on the amount of dwellings. So St. Mary's has 1,007 units. Our funding, however, was counted as 954 units, which is a difference of 53, which is also a difference of $794 roughly. So that is the loss that we encounter with the cut in the amount of apartments that can be funded. And so I'll take it now to section 964.430 of the 964 Rules and Regulations, which says, "Resident participation must include matters regarding federal public housing and section eight tenant-based assistance. A resident board member must be allowed to take part in decisions related to the administration, operation, and management of federal public housing programs and section eight tenant-based rental assistance programs." So I cite that passage because, from my experience, I have found that it is almost impossible to acquire any information in regard to my development's budget. I am, shared the information of vendors after the fact, only if I ask. And of course, there's no differentiation of what apartments that are in that number of 53 that are not counted, that are section eight or section nine. And again, as Ms. Torres said earlier, we are not advised as to who comes into our development as a new resident, but I think that it should be a part of NYCHA's policy. In fact, they have a handbook of 38 pages that says it is that we should take part of the interview of residents to come into our development. So there are a lot of things that are not being shared with the TAs and the resident councils. And I don't think it's fair, for me personally, who is extremely active in my development and citywide, as I sit on the district council with Danny Barber, I think that there's a lot of misinformation that is being shared when it comes to how it relates to the resident councils and their knowledge and what information is being shared with them. And I have a problem with that. I have a real problem with that. Because I, I take pride in what I do. I love my community very much and don't plan on leaving it if I don't have to. So as I sit in this seat, it is my responsibility. It is my responsibility and my oath that I have taken when I was sworn in to represent the residents in their best interest and also to be informative of anything that would affect them. And NYCHA makes it very difficult to do so. Just recently, I had a HUD inspector come and look at our boil- Um, just recently I had a HUD inspector come and look at our boiler systems. It's not the first time he had been here and he had sent an email out to a number of people. And what happened was nothing. So when he came back, the same issues were there. It is not an automated system and in fact, there's only one boiler that is supplying heat and hot water to six buildings and we are twenty-one story high-rise. So of course, the upper floors are not getting the hot water that they need or the heat. And that is a problem. Um, and that's just one problem amongst many. Um, recently, after four years, I attained a bathroom in my office so that residents could use it, of course, and it took four years. I love the bathroom. Thank you so much, Ms. Tremble. Um, however, at the end of the day, um, it's a situation where we are handled like second-class citizens, so to speak. Unless we ask questions, we don't get answers. And sometimes we don't get answers even if you ask. Um, I had to put in, uh, a request to the management who, our manager is in her later stage with NYCHA and is using up her days before she retires. So we see her one week, we might not see her for another two weeks and then she'll come back another week. So she's backlog. Uh, it's just a situation of, of frustration for resident council leaders like myself who put in sometimes a hundred hours a month. And, and she could look at my time sheets. Um, I'm putting in a lot of hours, not just in the office, but attending every meeting that they have so I can be better informed. And at the end of the days, the things that they say we're supposed to get, we're not getting. The information that should be provided is not provided and it is very frustrating. Um, again, with the, the vacancies, I have a problem with that. Um, Councilman Salamanca, who used to be my councilman, but no longer is thanks to redistricting and rezoning, which is, was a farce, um, and I miss him dearly. He, he spoke eloquently in regard to that issue and, and it, and somebody needs to explain it. Why do we have so many vacancies, um, in our developments? It's, it's unheard of. When I, when I looked at the numbers, I couldn't believe it. Fifty-three vacancies? Why? What is the excuse? And if you ask management, the first thing she's famous for saying is, I don't know. And that's not acceptable. So I, I, I would like some answers today, if possible.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Eldon, we will be sure to follow up specifically in your development, but that is the question that we are interrogating and expecting more specific answers from NYCHA. Thank you so much for all the work that you do. And, um, we will follow up certainly around the, I, I think you were referring to the nine sixty-four regulations and what is, um, not being followed. Uh, thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Eldon.
And thank you all. Have a good day.
Bye-bye.
The next witness will be Alexandra Doherty, also on Zoom. You should be getting a prompt to unmute yourself shortly. After that, we'll have Lucy Newman.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Alex Doherty. I'm a senior staff attorney and policy counsel at the Civil Justice Practice at Brooklyn Defender Services. Uh, thank you to the Committee on Public Housing and Chair Villas for inviting us to testify today about the impact of move-in delays on the people we serve. Uh, the Civil Justice Practice at BDS works with NYCHA tenants and applicants representing NYCHA tenants across the city in termination cases as well as permanent repairs cases, advocating for safety transfers, assisting with recertifications and rent adjustments, um, and assisting applicants from the initial application phase through move-in. And through that work, we see both the stabilizing effect that NYCHA housing can have for our clients by providing one of the only truly, uh, permanent affordable housing options in the city as well as the challenges our clients face attempting to access public housing. Um, and one of the largest problems we're currently encountering is extreme delays in move-ins with months or even years passing between accepting an apartment, um, and paying fees to the day of moving into the apartment. The majority of our clients who are currently in this situation have children in foster placements and access to stable housing is their only barrier to reunification. So NYCHA's delay is forcing these families to remain separated indefinitely. Our team works with many N zero priority applications, uh, which is a prioritized application for families with ACS involvement, uh, and is designed to accelerate applications for families where housing is the primary barrier to reunification. This priority status offers a vital opportunity for families to secure stable permanent housing together and for parents to reunite with their children who are in foster, foster care. Um, but delays in housing availability cause children to languish in the foster child, foster system far longer than they need to. One person we represent, Ms. D, had experienced housing instability for many years and her children were removed to the foster system. ICS agreed to return her children to her care once she had stable housing. Back in July twenty twenty-one, uh, Ms. D's N zero application was certified by NYCHA. And six months later, she had been selected for an apartment. In February twenty twenty-two, she viewed the empty apartment, paid her move-in fees and was told to expect a call from the manager when it was ready for her to move in. She called NYCHA every few weeks, but each time she was told that there was no new information and she had to be patient. Our office contacted the development, NYCHA's central office and the ACS housing team multiple times, but we were given conflicting information about what environmental testing had already been done and which repairs were still outstanding. Uh, all in all, NYCHA gave Ms. D five tentative move-in dates between April and August twenty twenty-two, all of which they failed to meet. Uh, she wasn't able to move in until late October twenty twenty-two, which was ten months after she was initially offered an apartment and paid her fees. During this time, her kids remained in a foster placement solely because of NYCHA's delay in preparing the apartment for move-in. Children in New York City's foster system remain in placements on average for two years, which is six months longer than children outside of the city. In our experience, a lack of stable housing contributes to these long stays. Children and families suffer long-term trauma by these separations. And while NYCHA provides critical access to permanent affordable housing and family stability, uh, when apartments sit empty for months or even years awaiting inspections or repairs, New Yorkers face unnecessary delays in safety and stability. So we urge the council to work with NYCHA to identify the root causes of these delays in turning over apartments and to ensure that NYCHA has the staff and funding to conduct environmental testing and complete necessary repairs on vacant apartments in a timely manner. Thank you, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you so much, Alexandra. We appreciate your testimony and can't agree more around the urgency around ensuring that we, um, turn over apartments rapidly and that there is a full communication system and a clear, um, a clear sense of accountability around whose roles and responsibilities, uh, fall to communicate with residents and to communicate proper information. So we thank you and look forward to working with you and NYCHA to improve this process for our residents.
Uh, next we'll call Lucy Newman. Uh, and, uh, all, all witnesses will know they can submit their written testimony up to seventy-two hours after the hearing, um, through the council website.
Good afternoon. Uh, thank you very much, Chair Villas, for having this, um, meeting and to the committee's members for your support of public housing. My name is Lucy Newman. I am a staff attorney at the Legal Aid Society. Um, and, um, wanted to talk about, um, the delays in apartment readiness, much like a lot of people here have talked about, and in addition to that, just vacancies generally. Um, as, uh, was mentioned by Ms. Torres and then, uh, one of my colleagues Alexandra Doherty, um, the delays in, in readiness is a huge nega-, has a huge negative impact on our clients and we see it daily throughout the five boroughs. Um, as we all know, that data that, uh, NYCHA posted confirms the dramatic increase in the turnaround time. And this has real damaging and harmful effects on the people and the families that are waiting to move into their new home. Um, we all know that many people, uh, who are waiting access to those apartments could be already living in NYCHA but are waiting for a safety transfer, many of whom by these delays are being put in real, you know, dangerous conditions because either they're, you know, uh, domestic violence survivors or victims of a crime or have, um, problems with their neighbors that put their, their safety at risk on a daily basis. Uh, many are also living in conditions that are dangerous to their health. Um, and continuing to stay in those apartments is, uh, poses a real threat to them. In addition to that, um, many thousands of people are waiting on, uh, N zero priority in city homeless shelters and those delays cause unbelievable stress on households that are languishing in city shelters. Um, in my written testimony, you'll see that I've, um, just explained a few case examples. And when I say it's just a few, we have hundreds that we could, uh, talk about. Um, many of them, again, um, examples and demonstrate and confirm the impact and experiences that both Ms. Torres spoke about and Alexandra spoke about and that just, this is what's happening on the ground to individuals. You'll see that, that I mentioned a, a woman, uh, who we're calling Ms. L. She accepted an apartment in March of twenty twenty-two and I understand now that that policy has changed in the, they're changing the issuance of the apartment readiness date. Um, but, but what we see in her, in her example is a lot of the problems that I believe will still continue notwithstanding this change that they made. For example, um, in December, in November of twenty twenty-two, NYCHA, I'd had been following up with them so much about why it was that she was still, you know, nine months later still waiting for this apartment. And they were able to confirm that the lead and asbestos abatement had actually been done in August, but the delay was now at the property management level. Um, and I think one of the things we see a lot of is that there is real disorganization at the property management level around staggering of, of appointments. A lot of the time apartments are just sitting there with, with no work being done at all. I do believe that a lot of the lead and asbestos abatement is being done pretty efficiently and effectively, but then there's this kind of gap after that about what then happens. Um, so we were told in December that she would get the apartment in, um, middle of January. We were now, uh, yesterday told that she'll be expecting to get it middle of February. So that's now eleven and a half months since she paid for security deposit and first month's rent. Um, I then discussed, uh, the case of a, a gentleman called Mr. M. His family were living in shelter and had been living in shelter for a very long time and had extremely, um, you know, terrible conditions during COVID. Um, and again, he received this ARD letter and then was basically told by management, you shouldn't ever rely on that letter because it's not definite. Um, but we just kept following up daily, all different types of advocates following up on his behalf. And every time we were just being given, uh, different dates. The stress that was put on that household was just unbelievable. He was always concerned that he was missing a letter that may then put him at risk of losing the apartment because as we know in shelter, a lot of time getting documents is tricky. They eventually ended up leaving shelter to a private apartment, um, in the summer of twenty twenty-two because they just couldn't wait any longer to secure, um, permanent housing. I also discussed the case of Ms. D. Um, she was a safety transfer, an emergency safety transfer with bedbugs in her NYCHA apartment. Her eldest child was unable to actually live with them in the apartment because it was so bad for his, um, his allergies and other things. And the two younger children slept in the living room because they couldn't access the bedroom. Because of un-, like, so many conversations that both our attorneys and other advocates at Legal Aid had within, um, the folks with NYCHA, we were finally able to get her into an apartment at the end of October. I have no doubt that she would not have been able to get into that apartment without the work that we did to communicate with NYCHA. So again, just lack of communication, uh, difficulties accessing information, property managers who are often very rude to individuals and tell them that they can't, um, give them that information, changing dates. Um, I really do believe a lot of it is mismanagement on a, on a, on a development level with a lack of coordination. And someone had mentioned, or you had a question around the training received because I think one of the recommendations that we put forward is that they have better training to help management learn how to schedule trades so that they are not wasting time. Um, because I think what we do see is that lead and asbestos abatement is happening, but thereafter, there's a lot of wait time. And I think that that's something that needs to be addressed to speed up readiness. Um, in terms of vacancies, generally, uh, we do understand that they are having to keep some units vacant in order to prepare, uh, hospitality suites and temporary relocation spaces for the work that needs to be done under PACT and comp mod. Um, what I would like to see is more detailed data as to what exactly the vacancies are being held for. So if it is for comp mod or for PACT, for a preparation for a PACT conversion, I think that they should be able to identify that in the data and make that publicly available. I noticed today that one of the things is, is that obviously the council in preparation for the hearing was given a much more detailed and, as you said, granular, um, set of data. And it would be great if that could be available online rather than just the, the pie chart with the non-dwellings and the, and the availables. So, uh, our ask would be that, um, really primarily so that we can hold NYCHA accountable to see whether the vacancies are a result of delays in readiness or if they're i- in preparation for temporary relocation as part of, um, repairs under comp mod and pact. So those are our recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the work that you do for countless New Yorkers. Um, I don't know what we would do without Legal Aid Society for sure. Um, and thank you for the recommendations that you put forward. I think one of the questions that I failed to ask was a clear articulation of the plan of, of the usage of vacant, um, apartments for moving around. We know that plays an important role to be able to repair quicker when you have these actual units. Um, so I, I will be following up with NYCHA around what that specific plan of retention and usage is um, in the context and moving forward. Um, I was curious about, um, and we will be following up on the detailed information. Um, and we have put forward data that will be made publicly, uh, that will be made public. Um, I heard from residents, we need to make more public and that is certainly our intention, um, to do that. Um, in terms of, um, oh man, I've, I've lost my train of thought again. Too much going on. Um, I guess, I guess with that, since I have forgotten my question for you, I want to thank you. We will follow up. We continue to look forward to partnering with you on, on moving things along. Um, and certainly I think these recommendations are both practical and really important and the communication breakdown, we must figure it out. Uh, we must do better. So with that, thank you so much. Yeah, and I guess with that, I just want to make some last closing comments. I want to thank everyone here today, my colleagues, members of the administration. Um, and as always, a big thank you to, um, the residents and advocates who have taken time out of their incredibly busy schedules to offer their insights and expertise. So while today our topic of discussion was regarding vacancies, the themes that have emerged were no different than most, if not all, of our public housing hearings to date. That is that NYCHA must do a better job at communicating with residents, communicating with our offices, having clear and consistent protocols. A tenant approved for a move-in should have access to the information regarding inspection dates so that they have the information they need to make decisions that have real impact on themselves and their families. We saw today very visibly the mental agony and anguish that is a direct result of a lack of communication and anxiety that being held in limbo with no information has on people's lives. NYCHA must consider the health and well-being of their tenants and applicants at all turns and so much can be alleviated simply by proper and consistent communication. I also just need to take a minute to express, um, that as we gear up for discussions around the fiscal twenty-four budget, the mayor's call to house New Yorkers is in direct contrast to what he's laid out in the preliminary budget. A significant cut, while the agency contends may not have a huge impact, a thirty million dollar cut to a vacant readiness unit that is directly engaged in making repairs to move this quicker while we are at the largest vacancy we've seen is a contradiction in terms to essentially housing New Yorkers. So we will continue to advocate for the restoration of this program. We will continue to advocate that NYCHA do better in its communications, that it moves families quicker and that it explains the vacancies that have spiked across the portfolios. Um, we urge NYCHA to take every effort to prevent further undermining any mission, um, of the authority and house working-class New Yorkers in dignified and safe homes. And so thank you with that and our hearing is closed. Oh, I have to do this, right?